We'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 19th, 2021. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Knoblauch.
Here.
Commissioner Heikle.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
Chair Schwartz.
Here.
And Commissioner Casey is not in attendance.
All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
Mr. Chair, slow vote.
Second.
Motion by Heikle, second by Knoblauch. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Agenda's adopted. Next, we have the approval of our July 15th meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki. Any corrections or further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. And minutes are approved. First order of business this evening is Planning Case 21-28, site plan approval for a 12,300 square foot office building, Holly Street and Spring Brook Drive, JHM Coon Rapids Properties. Mr. Harlecker.
Chair Schwartz and Commissioners, this first item was essentially continued from, excuse me, July meeting. At that time, the application had to be re-advertized because it was also required design flexibility for 60 percent glass along Spring Brook Boulevard. So that was re-advertized, so we'll have a new public hearing tonight in conjunction with this application. The applicant is proposing a 12,300 square foot building, office building, it's a medical office building, Spring Brook Drive and Holly Street, and this is Coon Rapids Boulevard, and this here is the QuickTrip on the corner. Building is a two-story structure, 12,289 square feet, includes 44 parking spaces with an existing access that will be modified slightly from Spring Brook Drive, and then a new access from Holly Street at this location here. This driveway here was designed and is shared with the QuickTrip convenience store. You've got the parking field here out front, stormwater pond to the rear of the site adjacent to QuickTrip. There's a small designated loading area here on the, what I would call, the west side of the building off of Holly Street. The building and parking comply with all the setback requirements of the Port and River Rapids Overlay District. We've got handicap spaces out front and the two landscape islands in the middle to help break up the parking field. This is the landscape plan. The landscape plan does meet the landscaping requirements with boulevard trees along Holly Street and Spring Brook Drive along with a hedge. They've got overstorey trees on the landscaped islands, landscaping around the drainage pond and along that west property line. Staff is recommending that a condition be, should the Planning Commission approve the site plan, two additional evergreen trees in this area here to help screen this loading area from Holly Street. These are the building elevations, these have been revised slightly since the July meeting. This is the north elevation that faces the parking lot. You can see it's a mix of stone and aggregate and brick along the base. There's a canopy over the front of the entrance. That canopy shows up a little bit better on this elevation here, which is the east elevation, visible from Spring Brook Drive. The River Rapids Overlay District does require that this area here between three and eight feet above grade facing the primary street be 60 percent glass. They revised their plan slightly and they've increased that percentage to about 33 percent. The reasons for the inability to meet that 60 percent requirement are several fold, and the applicant can get into that with a little more detail. It has to do with interior layout of the building as well as, you know, privacy issues because it is a medical clinic, and then the actual way the building is constructed, the panels that are used. These are the south and west elevations. This elevation is from Holly Street. Again, it meets the 30 percent brick requirement. There is no 60 percent glass requirement for this elevation. And a mix of materials continued around this side as well as the west side, which faces the adjacent undeveloped parcel. And this again is the side view of the canopy covering the front entrance. There's a sign is proposed on the driveway off of Spring Brook Drive. That'll require a separate sign permit. At this point, there are no wall signs proposed. That can come at a later date, and they will require separate sign permits as will the monument-style sign. The two issues that require design flexibility, one is the Florida area ratio. River Rapids Overlay District requires a Florida area ratio of .6, and the applicant's proposing .6 Florida area ratio would require a 49,500 square foot building and 165 parking spaces, and the site just isn't capable of accommodating that. So that's why they're asking for design flexibility for that. And then we get back to the windows along Spring Brook Drive, the 60 percent glass. Again, I touched on that briefly, but because of the use of the building and the way the building is designed, they're asking for the granting of design flexibility. Back in the July meeting, there was some discussion regarding the glass requirement as well as the existing QuickTrip parking on the applicant's property. He explained that that will no longer be an issue because they'll be using the site and it'll be fully developed. They also discussed additional traffic with the shared access coming out onto Spring Brook Drive, and this access has always been intended as a shared access. There's a median going up this way, and so traffic can come out here. People parked in the parking lot also have the option of going out onto Holly Street and going down to Spring Brook Drive and going north or south on Spring Brook Drive from that location. At the July meeting, the Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat, creating the two lots, and at the August meeting, City Council approved the preliminary and final plat. With that, staff is recommending the Commission approve the site plan and recommend approval of design flexibility. The design flexibility is a recommendation by the Commission with a final determination by the City Council. With that, I'll answer any questions, and the applicant is also in the audience tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Harlecker, in our packet, the glass percentage is listed as 33.4 at the beginning and 30.4 at the end. Which one's correct?
Thirty-three percent.
Thirty-three.
Correct.
Great, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker before we continue? Tischner, have anything he would like to add? Please step to the microphone, give your name for the record, name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Steve Pointexter, and I'm vice president of the developer for this property, JHM Coon Rapids Properties. I just thought I'd add, I brought some stone samples here if you would. I could approach the council members just so you could see what we're looking at here. This will be the stone that's going to go along the base, and this will be the aggregate on the panels. The darker panels will be, those will be cast darker on the ends, I think you saw those are darker. And then the band will be an aggregate, but that'll stain because you can't cast that economically in such a small amount. Otherwise, Mr. Harlecker, I adequately presented what we're asking for, so thank you for your consideration.
Do you have a sample of the banding around the building and the canopy colors?
It'll be the same as this. The banding around the canopy columns will be this brick.
Mr. Harlecker, could you put up the color rendering?
This is a column here, this is a brick to match what's on the building.
Yeah, I'm talking about the banding that goes between the first, basically between the first and second levels.
Here?
Yeah, that there, and then the actual color of the canopy overhang over the driveway.
The applicant speak to that.
Yeah, I don't, the colors will be consistent.
Please go to the microphone for the secretary to be able to pick you up.
Yes, those colors will be consistent with what you're seeing on the elevation. They will be, the lighter brown will be at the ends, the darker brown will be the band to give it contrast, and that band will continue over the canopy roof that you're seeing. And then the panels themselves will be a lighter color. I don't think it'll be quite that light, it'll be more the color that I showed you. We're trying to keep this earth tones is the goal.
All right, thank you. All right, last month, we did open and then continue a public hearing. We need to reopen that public hearing, so I will do that at this time. And then we need to add the design flexibility into the public hearing as well?
Correct.
Or do we need a separate public hearing?
Oh. Did we, just do it on the low.
What, me?
Just do it on the low, just one public hearing.
One public hearing, all right, thank you. So the public hearing is back open. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak to the public hearing on this matter? Anyone wish to speak to the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and contain comments to the Commission. Commissioner, your thoughts, questions, concerns?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Schmalki.
One more question for Mr. Harlecker. Do we have, are there irrigation plans?
Pardon, do we have what?
Is irrigation in our plans?
Yeah, there will be, all the landscaping is required to be irrigated.
Okay.
Typically, irrigation plans don't come in formal plans until they submit for building permit.
Okay, got it. So we don't need to add that as an additional condition?
You could, that all landscape areas be irrigated.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
I just have, not really a question, it's a, oh, it's a question and a concern for Mr. Harlecker. Knowing this corner and the amount of traffic with the QuickTrip in that corner, the concern I have is of, the inbound traffic into the lot seems to be not an issue, but just getting northbound onto Spring Brook Drive, that's just a concern I have, and I don't, the, you know, I'm identifying a potential problem, but the, my only idea I had for a solution was, is it feasible to put a right turn only sign there? People have to choose if they're gonna turn left or not, but...
It was really set up for drivers to go either direction.
That's it.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle.
I know we talked briefly about what the parking, or the in-and-out situation from there, and I agree that I, you know, I hope I'm wrong, but I kind of see that it might become an issue of people coming out of QuickTrip, meeting the people coming in to go to the clinic, but, and so that is a concern, but otherwise, I think the building and the rest of it all looks good. And I think once, if we, if we're all in agreement that the traffic flow will be good, then I fully support it.
Mr. Schmalki.
I'm ready to make a motion. In Planning Case 21-28, the Commission approved the site plan and recommend approval of the design flexibility with the following conditions and findings. Conditions for site plan approval: all engineering comments be addressed, a site security agreement be executed, trash receptacles and bike rack be provided near the front entrance, an additional two evergreen trees be provided along the west property line towards Holly Street, screening must be provided around dumpster enclosure, all signage will require separate sign permits. And I'd like to add to those conditions one more, it would be condition number seven, that all landscape areas are irrigated. Am I required to go over the others two or just list it as they're in the packet?
Just list as they're in the packet.
Okay, the findings for design flexibility and are as included in the packet as well.
Second.
We have a motion by Schmalki, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. This is a decision by the Planning Commission and can be appealed to the City Council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chair Schwartz, I'd just like to note also that the design flexibility will be heard by the council on September 7th.
That's right, the design flexibility is a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and that will be heard by the City Council after September 7th meeting. Thank you. All right, our next case, Planning Case 21-32, a site plan for a car dealership on Gateway Drive, Gateway Commerce Center, Phillips Architects. Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Chair, again, this item was continued from the July meeting. The applicant is proposing a 28,300 square foot building with a mezzanine that's 2,000 square feet, 2,300 square feet, and as well as 200 space parking lot. Site is located in the Gateway Drive Commerce Center on the, I would say, the northwest end of Gateway Drive. At the City Council meeting on August 4th, Council approved the PUD with an added condition that the site plan for Lot 2 must come prior to or with the development of Lot 3. They also approved the preliminary and final plat for this project, so the Commission tonight is considering the corresponding site plan application. This is the proposed overall site plan here, this is the PUD that was approved by the City Council with the dealership lot here, this is Lot 2 listed as a future dealership, and this third lot is also listed as a future dealership. Site plan is consistent with the PUD that was approved by the Council. Here's the site plan for the proposed dealership. There are two access points off of Gateway Drive, one here, one here, with circulation flow around the building. You've got customer parking in front, you've got areas dedicated for service vehicles back here and over here, employees across the back, and then the remainder of it out front are vehicles for inventory. The main entrance is at this location here. The site is relatively flat, they are proposing an underground stormwater management system This is the proposed landscape plan. There are quite a few trees and shrubs proposed on the site. They've got trees on the landscaped islands in the larger parking lot that help break up the parking lot. They've got overstorey trees along the boulevard as well as some across the back with ornamental trees closer to the building. Staff is recommending that additional evergreen trees, a mix of evergreen and overstorey across the back at strategic locations here, probably here and here, to help screen the building to the north, as well as landscaping along this common line with the Honda dealership, which is just to the east. There is a pad here for a display as well as a monument sign. The sign has been modified slightly so that it is 28 feet instead of the proposed, I think it was 30 feet originally. This is the, an architectural rendering of the dealership. It's got a mix of architectural metal panels, different colors and textures. You can see it's an earth tone color scheme that's used throughout the building. Here's a more, a little more detailed line drawing of the building elevations. This is the west side facing the highway, and you can see it's mostly glass through the showroom. All the overhead doors are also glass panel doors, so you've got a lot of glass along the front. This is the north elevation, this is the side that faces Lot 2, and you can see they've got it wrapped around the side as well as the glass is wrapped around the corner, and then they've got glass on the overhead doors on this side also. And this is the south elevation, this is the side that faces the Honda dealership. Again, the materials are wrapped around the corner as is the glass. This area here that you see is the, kind of the intake area for the service, cars that come in for service. And then on the back here, this is the door for the car wash, and this is the, on the north end, this is the other door for the car wash that they use for detailing the vehicles before they bring them out to the customers. Again, this is kind of a line drawing of the elevation from a different perspective of the side facing Highway 10. This is the east elevation, faces the north. This is the car wash area through here. As you can see, they did wrap the materials around the side and then continue the ACM panels along the back, so it's kind of an earth tone building. The trash enclosure is located to the rear of the building, it will be required to have additional screen around it. Lighting, consistent with the standards of the PUD. Staff is also requiring that they put, excuse me, pedestrian scale lighting, mission-style lighting that you find along Gateway Drive in the earlier parts of this project, those should be continued along the sidewalk here in front of the building. They will be using a new LED technology, the lights will be on timers, they'll be dimmable and on sensors for night security, so if there's movement in the parking lot, it'll trigger the sensors, otherwise the parking lot lighting will be dimmed. Wall signage, there is some wall signage shown, excuse me, on the building elevations. Like other projects, these are just representative at this point, and they will have to come in with separate sign permits for the wall signage as well as the monument-style sign when it's time to install those features. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission approve the proposed site plan with the 13 conditions in the staff report. Some of them are noted. Along the west property line, earlier in the review process, we had talked about doing a temporary curbing along here. Following the council meeting, staff has changed that and is recommending that this be a permanent concrete curb and gutter to match the rest of the site. And if and when that project does develop, they'll be able to cut access points through here, and then it will also allow a break there for landscaping purposes between the two facilities. Talked about the additional trees. There's no brick proposed in the building elevations, and staff is recommending a condition that the brick be incorporated into the design of the building on the west, north, and south elevations. The applicant has modified the sign, so it's a 28-foot site height. The base material should be revised with similar material to that used on other ground signs in the PUD and is, and then will require a separate permit. The outdoor area near the front entrance, this area here, be revised to accommodate outdoor seating and a bike rack. The trash enclosure in the back, be constructed of brick or stone that are consistent with the dealership building, and additional screening be provided around the enclosure. With that, I'll answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
There are, I can't recollect ever seeing, this is pretty close to being the most There are, I can't recollect ever seeing, this is pretty close to being the most conditions required, a recommendation. And I see there's like six items, 3, 5, 7, 8, 10, 12, from the PUD design guidelines and the site plan criteria. My question is, do you consider these to not be serious enough that the developer will be able to achieve all these requirements to fulfill the recommendation by the planning commission?
I believe that they can, otherwise we wouldn't have put them in as conditions. The applicant is here too to, I think better speak to your questions.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, it was more to the planning commission that it would be feasible for all these requirements to be met in order for this planning case to proceed. I know I'm trying to predict the future if it will be successful, but I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Knoblauch, we often get conditions with, regarding landscaping. That's almost a condition of every site plan that is considered. The brick reincorporated into the design of the building, that was a similar situation that we had dealt with with Honda, and they were able to revise the elevations to meet their requirement. The outdoor area near the main entrance, you know, providing seating and a bike rack is kind of what I would consider minor, minor changes. And the curbing on the property line, typically we require curbing along all parking areas, concrete curb and gutters, so that's not unusual either.
All right.
And the circulation plan, that is reviewed by the fire department. We did get that, and their initial review was that it would be sufficient. But we just put that in there in case, when they do submit for building permit, it's a flag to double check that.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add on to Mr. Harlecker's comments. I mean, I think some of these are, and Scott can correct me, some of these are based on lessons learned
Yes.
from our previous projects in Gateway. So the list maybe is a little longer than we customarily might have on a project, but I think just given our history, we wanted to be more clear in terms of the list of conditions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Harlecker, to your knowledge, have we done an underground filtration system in the Gateway area before?
I don't think so. This would require engineering review and approval. I know the concern with the high groundwater tables doing there in the fill.
Yeah, that is my primary concern.
It would require engineering review and approval.
Okay. And is there, I guess to that extent, has the applicant, if they're in this plan, it doesn't look like there is an alternative way for them to deal with it without it being underground?
Commissioner Geisler, back when they did the initial PUD development, these areas back in here were really set up also to handle stormwater runoff. These ponds here as well, on the, one on the end were set up, and these areas here, and then there's another one up by, kind of where the bend in the road is, were all set up in response to stormwater management concerns.
And so those areas are essentially never going to be developed and left for stormwater management?
Well, they have been. They were set up.
They're not, we're not going to put stuff on them. They're, they are as they are.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? All right, is the petitioner like to add anything? Come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is David Phillips. I'm the architect for Walzer Automotive Group. My address is 401 North 3rd Street, Suite 450 in Minneapolis, Minnesota. I have just a couple of very brief comments. We've, I've reviewed the 13 conditions. The comments would relate to number eight. I would like the flexibility to have brick or stone, as opposed to just brick. The, we did submit a revised sign plan for 28 feet. We anticipate a stone base similar to Honda, but different color. If you look at our rendering, it's a dark brown coloring to go with the tan. It's surprising, the FabCon sample in the previous application looks like my FabCon sample here. The last item, the only other item that we'd have, that we'd request is the trash enclosure. We'd actually like to make it an enclosure as opposed to just a fence, so I would like to build that out of the same architectural precast panels that you saw in the medical building and you'll see on our, our building. It's a much more durable material. It'll confine the waste inside. We want to be able to put doors on it as opposed to just an open fence gate. They tend to deteriorate over time. So we'd like to have a more expensive, permanent solution for that. So we'd like that flexibility to work with staff to get that, using the precast, the architectural precast that's on the rear of our building on there. We will add stone and work with staff, stone and brick on the front and on the sign base, so. But I'd like the ability to look at stone in addition to brick on there. And other than that, we appreciate working with the staff and would request your approval. I'm certainly open for any questions that I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Phillips, the engineering comments mentioned that there is not a lighting plan provided currently. Is there one in the works?
I thought we said one.
Hi. There might be, but we just didn't include it in this.
I, we have, we work with LSI lighting. They do a lot of, lot lighting. Lighting is state of the art. It's all straight down. The LED are all computer controlled, so we have them on a laptop in the dealership. I can turn any pole to any brightness level we want. The way we operate the lighting is we typically drop down to about 15% at 10:30, 11 o'clock, when people have left the dealership for the evening, including staff. Drop down to 15%, and as Scott has indicated, we have motion sensors on the poles. So if somebody's there at 3:00 a.m. for good purposes or bad, it will cause that pole that they're near to come up. So any, we like it because there's an awareness somebody's on the property, but then it'll drop back down when that leaves. If your police, for instance, are driving by on Highway 10, they might wonder what's going on on our lot. But it's very neighborhood friendly, although our neighbor is a parking lot for cars, just like ours. Our lighting, you probably wouldn't tell the difference between theirs and ours when we're done, except we think we do better controls.
Sure. So the question that I had on the lights, are they, you said they're downward facing, are they dark sky compliant or dark sky rated? Do you know?
No.
Okay. You don't know, or they are not?
They are, they are not, they're not dark sky compliant fixtures. They're straight downward, but I don't want to represent that they have a higher standard than that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, and I, you being the architect, I don't know if it's a question you can answer, but in our packet, we got a narrative from the applicant. In page two of the narrative, he gives a brief project description saying Walzer Automotive Group has been awarded a new Hyundai franchise facility will create 35 to 50 new well-paying jobs. Then on page three, under hours of operation, it says Walzer Hyundai sales hours are currently 8:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday. If this is a new, if this is a new franchise and a new dealership, how can they currently have hours?
We have, the answer is we operate a second Hyundai dealership, so we anticipate this would have the same hours as the one we operate in Brooklyn Park right now. And we actually have about 14 dealerships, retail dealerships, and 14 or 15. We added a Subaru. But I should point out, this is a brand-new franchise, so we're not relocating any jobs from any other city. These are pure new net gain jobs here. So, and the hours we anticipate operating is the same as our other businesses there. One last thing on the civil engineering, the underground storage. We do that on virtually every site nowadays because of the lack of ponding space. Our civil engineer was the civil engineer that set this project up 20 years ago for the developer and has worked on it ever since. So we rely on them, their design, and I have every confidence that it works, or we wouldn't have proposed it, so.
And Mr. Harlecker, do we have any renderings of this new revised sign with stone or brick incorporated into the base?
There are not.
We haven't done a color rendering yet of that. But we have to apply for a separate permit for that anyway. It's not part of your approval.
But you have agreed to the 28-foot?
Yeah. We resubmitted 28 feet, and we'll, that's why we'd like the flexibility to look for stone or brick to build that base with, and to add to accents to the building.
All right, thank you. Any other questions to the petitioner at this time? All right, may have more later.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we did open a public hearing last month and then continued it, so at this time I will reopen that public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to speak to this public hearing on the site plan for this car dealership? Anyone wish to speak to the public hearing? Seeing none, close the public hearing and contain comments to the commission. Commissioner, your thoughts? I guess first on using stone instead of, in place of brick possibly, on the building elevations?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
I find that the request for aid is reasonable. Brick or stone, it's, we do that in a lot of other places. I think that that tends to match what we're looking for. As a matter of fact, the condition 13 says brick or stone already, so I think that would be consistent. I do have a question, actually, on the request on 13, if staff is comfortable with the applicant's request to basically make a better enclosure than what we would typically see, is that a, is that a concern?
No, it's, typically we do see trash enclosures that are consistent with materials used in the building, and the precast is a sturdy material, and we're fine with that as an option.
So as a modification, if, so long as it's stating the enclosure be constructed materials consistent, which is already there
Yeah.
with the building, we're
Yep.
comfortable. Okay, great.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Harlecker, I would assume then that the stone in the trash enclosure and the stone on the building itself will be matching or corresponding the same type of stone?
Yes.
If you, if you're going to, you said you're going to make it a combination of brick, and you'd like the option of making it a combination of brick and stone?
No, not on the trash enclosure at the rear of the property. We're asking for an architectural precast that is all of our walls on the rear of the building to be the same. We would not put brick or stone on the trash enclosure.
It says the trash enclosure, number 13, be constructed of brick or stone material.
And that's the one I've asked to change to precast to match the building, architectural precast.
And Mr. Harlecker, we've done that in the past?
Yes, we've had dumpster enclosures that are, come in in a variety of materials, as long as they're consistent with materials that are used on the building.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
So do we want to rephrase that then to say, I mean, number 13 currently reads the trash enclosure be constructed of brick or stone materials that are consistent with the dealership building? I mean, that's being pretty specific that it is brick or stone, expected to be consistent with the building. Do we need to rephrase that to give them the flexibility, just something to say that enclosure be constructed of brick or stone or precast materials to match architecture?
What if we just deleted brick or stone altogether, so it read constructed of materials consistent with dealership building?
Okay. Is that okay?
That would...
Just strike that. Perfect. Okay. Perfect.
So just strike those three words altogether. All right, Commissioner, anything else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
I will make a motion. In planning case 21-32, I will make a motion to approve the proposed site plan with the conditions as cited in our packet.
Are you not going to read them all?
No, I'm not. With one change to the condition number eight, which should be rephrased to be brick or stone be incorporated into the design of the building on the west, north, and south elevations. And then condition number 13 will say the trash enclosure be constructed of materials that are consistent with the dealership building, additional screening be provided around the enclosure.
Second. Motion by Schmokey, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to city council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck. All right, our next case, our solar ordinance. And it says, Mr. Familious.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn this over to Olivia Dorohuevland, our sustainability planner who has done a lot of work on this, and she has a short presentation to talk about the latest updates to our solar ordinance.
All right, thank you.
All right, Chair Schwartz, commissioners, this agenda item is an update to the city's solar energy ordinance in the zoning code. Our current ordinance was adopted in 2014. Since then, technology and best practices have changed, and we have drafted a new ordinance to respond to those changes. Coon Rapids is now pursuing silver level designation in the National Soul Smart Program at the direction of city council. Soul Smart is a program that certifies cities as being solar-ready when they have ordinances and processes in place that support local solar markets. We have seen a steady increase in the number of solar permits applied for over the years and systems are located throughout the city. We now have just under 2 megawatts of solar generation capacity in the city when you add all of our private systems together. Over the last few months, we have had Soul Smart, the planning commission yourselves, sustainability commission, and city council provide feedback on the ordinance update process. And there has also been resident interest in allowing for solar garden-type development And there has also been resident interest in allowing for solar garden-type developments on larger parcels of land in the city. We have drafted a new ordinance taking all feedback into account. Our current ordinance allows for solar energy systems as an accessory use. We currently allow for both roof and ground-mounted systems. Our new ordinance preserves that and then clarifies some conditions related to lot coverage, number of accessory structures, carports, and height. This ordinance also moves the definitions from the larger zoning code definition section and has them specifically associated with the solar ordinance, as these definitions are not used elsewhere in the zoning code and they are updated for this new ordinance. So that is why you'll see two ordinances that are being changed in your packets. One is the edits to the solar ordinance and then the other is the edits to the definitions ordinance. The new ordinance also allows for solar energy to be generated commercially. So to that end, we have created a mechanism through which larger-scale solar energy systems could be installed in the city. If a parcel is twenty acres or more in size, they could install a community-scale solar energy system on the site with a conditional use permit. This would allow them to have ground-mounted solar as a principal or accessory use where the footprint of the system they install isn't constricted by the size of a principal structure, which is how we regulate ground-mounted systems in our current ordinance. We have outlined screening and ground cover requirements for such a system type, and any system would go through the CUP process in this sort of community-scale category on the right-hand side of this table. This is a new addition from when we worked shop the ordinance with you last month, as we wanted to make sure that we were covering our bases for all types of solar development that may be feasible and economically productive within the city. We also see that there are a few parcels in the city where solar might be a good complementary use or principal use given other land characteristics. And so we wanted to give property owners that potential and provide the city with a specific framework within which we could have those conversations with property owners. If we had sort of kept it as-is, the conversations would sort of go through the roots of really sort of struggling to interpret the code to see how we could allow these things. And so we think that having a more sort of firm outline of how those conversations would take place gives us some more control over how that happens. So the map shown here outlines in black some of the parcels that are larger than twenty acres in size that may be eligible for a CUP for solar in the future if that's a route they decide they want to go down. I also have some visual examples of the types of solar installations that this ordinance will support. This is an image of a home with a rooftop solar array. This type of system is currently allowed under our ordinance. This is a ground-mounted solar array, sort of residential setting, which we currently allow in our ordinance. This is an example of sort of a larger-scale rooftop array on a commercial building, which we also currently allow and are preserving. And then this is an image of solar carports in the parking area of a shopping center. Our current ordinance allows carports, but we provide more information on appropriate heights and coverage and sort of specifically deal with it in the solar ordinance in this go-around. And then this is an example of carports at the Great River Energy Campus in Maple Grove, sort of a local example of something that's been installed recently. And then lastly, this is an example of a principal-use solar garden that would be under sort of that CUP category in the new ordinance. Granted, the context in this picture is quite different from what we would see and we would have more screening that would be required for a system like this, but it sort of gives you an idea of something of scale that something might look like. With that overview of the new ordinance, staff recommends the commission recommend approval of the solar ordinance, section eleven dash sixteen oh two, and the definitions ordinance, section eleven dash two oh one. And I am happy to take any questions you might have.
And Commissioner, any questions? I guess you did a good job, we don't have any questions for you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
If there are no questions, oh, public hearing, sorry.
All right, we do need a public hearing on this matter. So I will open a public hearing in our solar ordinance. Anyone wish to speak to this, please step up to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Chair Schwartz, members of the planning commission, staff members. I'm Lonnie McCauley, address is ninety-seven oh one Avacet Street Northwest. I had this wonderful half-hour presentation to you, but things simply be going well and I'm not going to take that much time. I'm chair of a, of a task force called the Coon Rapids Regenerative Energy Task Force. It's made up of local officials, state officials, Met Council, Anoka Ramsey, and also energized, let's call it, citizens. Senator Newton is here with us today and also a, an energized public, citizen. We met about eighteen months ago because we were interested in what we could do to help the city consider going further in their solar ordinances. And there, we found that ordinances and residents are eager to invest in solar energy, both as a cost savings and also as, to satisfy their interest in renewable energy and also less carbon in the air. We're happy now that the city is in the process of revising their solar ordinance, energy ordinance, to allow for solar fields in the, in the city. Solar fields under Excel Energy and also hopefully in the future, Conexus, will allow for residents to, to subscribe to the energy that is being produced. Therefore, they will reduce their energy costs, but they will also satisfy their, their interest in simply having energy in the city and that is regenerative. We want, maybe one of the most interesting things that we were, are interested in however is that we want the city to be among those far-reaching and thinking far-reaching communities that are attracting citizens to the city in the path, that is on the path of innovation and also energy savings. It's being, it's been very rewarding working with the sustainability commission, with the, with Colleen Sinclair, with Olivia Doral-Hovland?
You got it.
And city staff to see this amended ordinance in the planning commission level, and we urge your approval of it. Any questions?
I don't believe so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anyone else wish to speak, public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So I, I would like to commend staff on such a comprehensive overhaul of this and doing such a great job, especially with the sustainability commission. This is exactly what we needed and where we needed to go. I think it's a great step forward for what we're doing here. It, it really details a lot that's now and in the future, so I'm excited to see this. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would like to move approval of planning case twenty-one thirty-four, that we approve the solar ordinance, section eleven sixteen oh two, and definitions ordinance eleven two oh one.
I'll second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, this is a recommendation by the planning commission and will be introduced by the city council at their September seventh meeting. Thank you.
Great job.
All right, moving on to other business, Mr. Harlecker.
Couple updates. We did get the building permit for the, it's called Golden Aspen Flats, the apartment building over by the post office. Their first building permit is for the, the first building, first phase building, the seven-unit building, and the community center. So those are currently going through the review process. The Springbrook Apartments will be adding parking on their adjacent lot there to clear up some parking issues that are currently going on on Ninety-Fourth. So they're going through the planned seminal process for installing the, the proof of parking that was approved as part of their site plan approval.
Is that somebody who just goes to staff or does that come back to us?
It's just staff review. It's consistent with the plans that were approved as part of the site plan approval. The, next month, we've got the Paladin Charter School will be for the commission for a conditional use permit and site plan review. And we also have a home occupation permit for a Harris lot.
Mr. Harlecker, didn't you make a comment or report that permits had been pulled for the, at New Car Wash?
Yes, they did submit building permits. I'm not sure where they are in the building permit review process, but they did submit plans for the construction.
They still haven't started?
No, they have not.
Tearing down the old one, the old gas station. All right, Commissioner, anyone else have anything for other business?
Mr. Chair, just?
Mr. Fornelius.
If I may, so we had planned to do a workshop following this meeting and we didn't publish it, so we apologize for that. So our intent is to reschedule that for your September meeting, so we'll plan on doing that next, next month and hope, hope you can all be, be a part of that.
And about how much time do you figure that's going to take? Well, hours upon hours?
No, I don't think it'll take hours upon hours. I have about a thirteen-slide presentation, it's really meant more as a conversation, question and answer. Some of you have served on the commission a long time and are very familiar with the things that we do here, others maybe have less experience and so some of that background may be, may be helpful, but really it's, you know, I would say a half hour, forty-five minutes.
Thank you. No one else has anything?
No, we're trying to draw this out.
Chair Schwartz, if there's no further development, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Navak, second by Schmalki, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Meeting's adjourned.